Welcome, everyone. I now call the October 18th, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The City of Bothell is now providing the option of attending council meetings remotely or in person. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Verbal comments may be taken either in person or remotely. Sign-up sheets were provided online by the City Clerk's Office via link from the agenda. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as not to interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say "here" when the city clerk calls your name.
Councilmember Zorn?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember McNeil?
Here.
Councilmember Manke?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd? Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Here.
All present with the exception of Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you, City Clerk. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking and mute your microphone when not speaking. The first item on the agenda is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations, reports, and briefings. First up, we've got public engagement opportunities. We have Trick or Treat on Main Street, October 31st, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. You can join us downtown on Halloween night for free trick-or-treating provided by participating businesses. Enjoy special surprises for our ghouls, goblins, and creatures of the night. You can learn more at bothellwad.gov/trickortreat. Waste Mobile returns October 21st through 23rd, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Don't miss the last Waste Mobile of 2022 and drop by the UW-Bothell campus to dispose of unwanted, unused, and old household hazardous waste products. You can learn more at bothellwad.gov/hazmat. And we're now accepting applications for the pop-up shops on Main through October 25th. Calling all entrepreneurs, City of Bothell is now accepting applications for pop-up shops on Main our Inclusive Retail Incubator Program. You can learn more at bothellwad.gov/popshops. All right, next up, I'm going to turn it over to Kyle to introduce our presenter.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Tonight, we do have one presentation from our friends at Sound Transit. So they're here tonight to talk about an arts program, an artist selection, and an opportunity for community members to get involved in informing what that looks like. I want to, just by way of background, let you know as well that the same presentation or a similar presentation will be going to the Arts Commission later this week. But when Sound Transit reached out in interest of going to the Arts Commission, we had just done the survey from art boards and commissions, and one of the themes was around strengthening the relationships with councils. And I also felt like, in order to get more eyes and visibility towards the community of this opportunity to partner with Sound Transit, it'd be great to get this at a council meeting. So tonight, there is a team from Sound Transit here to present, and they'll walk you through what their goals are and how their selection process is going to look. While there are multiple members, I'm going to toss it over to Ashley Long, who is a project manager for the public art program for Sound Transit. So Ashley, take it away.
Hello. Thanks for letting us join you tonight. I am going to take just one moment, since we're doing this hybrid, and share my screen. So we have a few slides to show you, so if you'll bear with me for just a second. Apologies. Here we go.
Ashley, I have to share my screen later tonight, so I won't judge.
It's always a tense moment.
I'll beat your record, don't worry.
So hopefully you can now see my screen. I'm Ashley Long. I'm a project manager with the Sound Transit Art Program. And joining me tonight is the Sound Transit Program Director Barbara Lukey. And also, I'll let Barbara say hello.
Hi, glad to be here. Sound Transit includes art in all their facilities in their service region. And we do it to be good neighbors. We think it enhances the value of our property, and we think it also helps the people who are using those facilities. So while we're doing it all over the county, Ashley's about to tell you about one project that's getting started in your city right now.
So also joining us tonight is Ariel Taylor from our Government and Community Relations Team.
Hi, everybody. I won't take any time other than to say thank you for having us tonight. We know that art and stride, in particular, the stride service with Bus Rapid Transit coming to Bothell is of great interest to the council, and we're here to talk about some very fun, exciting things that will happen with stride coming to Bothell. So we look forward to the conversation.
So as Barbara mentioned, the Sound Transit Art Program, we call ourselves START. We manage artwork that's integrated into all Sound Transit facilities. So we're working in all the different modes of transportation and different areas where Sound Transit is located. We're developing right now art opportunities for Bus Rapid Transit, but we're also developing art opportunities for the Bus Base North. And today, we're focused on the Bus Base North because it's in the preliminary stages of design, and we'd like to get started with working with an artist on some of the opportunities there. So currently, Bus Base North is at 30% design, and it's moving into 60% design. So it's at the early stages of design development. START's been working with the Bus Base North design team to determine what opportunities and locations where artwork could contribute to the facility. At this time, we're really at the preliminary stage again, so we're considering sites for the artwork that are on the most visible locations. So we want to have a prominent location for artwork, visible from the public, and we're looking at something that's integrated into the architectural finishes on the facade of the building or in this frontage plaza that's being created. So it's a mix of landscape and hardscape. The administrative building has got this more public facade, so the bus base itself, the maintenance building, is expected to be on the backside of the property. So this will be more of an administrative or like an office building look that's more integrated into the design of the area. So I wanted to show a few examples because we've got these two different types of opportunities that we're considering. One is something incorporated into the architectural finishes, and what could that look like? So these are some examples from the existing Sound Transit Art Collection to give you a sense of what this could be. So this is an artwork that's at the Northgate Station in Seattle. It was created by artist Mary Ann Peters, and it's incorporated into the glass. So if you're standing on the platform of the station, you'll look through the artwork to the exterior. And Mary Ann is a really accomplished painter from Seattle. She'd never worked in glass before. So it was a way for her to take her really beautiful painterly style and translate it into this new medium and play with light and color. This is a large-scale, permanent mural that was done in porcelain enamel at Capitol Hill Station in Seattle as well. This was also another artist that had never worked in this material or at this scale before. It's Ellen Forney, who lives in this neighborhood, and she's a graphic novelist and illustrator. So working on something like this was brand-new to her, but she was able to create something that's really bold and graphic and was a landmark piece for the station. At Jekyll Park Station, which is currently under construction in Seattle, artist Hank Willis Thomas worked with the community and with Jimi Hendrix's family to find these images of Jimi. There's one that's a picture of young Jimi before one of his first concerts, and this is more classic Jimi at the height of his career. So this was translated into the metal panels that were planned for the finish of the wall of the station. So Hank is a more experienced artist than Ellen or Mary Ann. He's shown his work nationally, and he's done a lot of big public art projects. So this was not new to him. But what we love about this type of opportunity where you're translating something two-dimensionally into an existing finish is it gives artists with varying degrees of experience and understanding of material an opportunity to do something. So it's a really inclusive approach to creating a public art project. So another great example of this is that the recently completed garage at the Sounder Station in Puyallup. This was a piece done by artist Qualsias Shawn Peterson, and it has imagery from the traditional lucite seed stories that was integrated into the glass for the entry tower. So it creates this, another kind of permanent mural, but a beacon to guide people to the station. And as we mentioned before, I've shown a lot of images of 2D examples just to give you a sense of, because we don't know what the finish will be and what type of material it will be. We're also looking at sculptors to possibly create something freestanding for the frontage plaza. So these are the opportunities that we're developing. We're working with the design team to see what the possibilities might be. And we're moving into artist selection. So the way that artists are selected, we work with communities to develop a community-based panel that will select the artists for these opportunities, to take on these opportunities. Sound Transit Art Program facilitates that process, but we're not voting members of that process. We have an existing roster of artists that are pre-vetted from across the region. So typically, we look at the opportunity based on the site conditions, working with the design team, and then we develop a short list of artists that we know that could take that project on. We pull that community selection panel together, and they review the artists based on their qualifications. We don't ask artists to put together proposals for the project because we want them to get to know the community and do their research and work with the design team before they develop a concept. So we know that takes a lot of time to do, and we want them to take that time. So they present their body of work and their qualifications, and the community selection panel determines who the final artist will be. So once the artist is selected, then they would partner with the design team and Sound Transit Art Program to finalize the locations. They'd be working with them on the different, if it is a 2D translation, what the locations and the materials could be for their work or developing a design concept for the plaza. And once they've gone through that process, working with the design team, then they'd start developing a concept and a final design. So at this stage of the project, we are reaching out to the community and looking for panelists that could participate in the artist selection process. Typically, we're looking for members of the community that have an understanding of the arts, they're artists, they're cultural leaders, they are designers, they know the community well, and they can come to join this process and help us go through the short list of artists and select someone that will create something really great for the bus base. So we'd love to get any questions that you have and any recommendations that you may have for potential panelists. And with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Councilor Alderks?
Thanks so much for this presentation, especially the slideshow with just different artworks that we can find around the sound. Some of those I've seen in person, but some of those were new to me as well. And I know that public art is something that enlivens the city, and I'm glad that you are working to include this in the construction. And one project that we're currently working on here in Bothell is telling the forgotten story of Bothell pre-colonization and also people who've been historically excluded from the general way of doing things. And so I very much would love for you all to connect with that project and see if there's any artist recommendations there or just to give some guidance to the artists on your list that it would be appropriate to connect to that project in order to magnify their work and to be able to help us tell the stories of residents of Bothell and the native peoples who lived here before it was Bothell, that we can represent some of that history and those stories in our local architecture. So that would be my suggestion and hope that is a possible direction for this project.
Well, thank you for making us aware of that project. We'd love to, I'm not sure if that's being managed through your Arts Commission, but we'd love to connect with the folks that are organizing that, and it sounds like that could be a potential, someone on that team could be a potential artist selection participant to help guide us with who the right artist is for this project. So we'd love to get some more information about how to connect with them.
Yeah, and I'll just say, that sounds like a great endeavor and really in alignment with a lot of ways that we like to look at areas and emphasis that we have right now in projects we're trying to program. We certainly want to make artists aware of that viewpoint.
And Ashley?
We spend a lot of time thinking about that.
Ashley, this is Kyle, and our landmark board is actually managing that work, so we can put you in contact with them as well, or we'll have staff follow up to make sure that your information is available to them.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Kyle.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you for the presentation. I think that's a fabulous opportunity to learn more about those who were here before us and learn a little bit about who we are today. I have a couple of questions around the media and the art. And is there an opportunity for that art to change? Are we looking at media that would allow it to change over time? So for instance, a local artist would do something on a glass panel wall system, and it is a film, an art film, that is put on that glass panels today. And then maybe in a few years, it's changed, and it tells a story over a period of time where the art is actually changing throughout time. So is there opportunities for that? Have you guys done that in the past? I know sculptures and things like that are one-time things that are put up, but with today's technology and the way we have opportunities today, is there a way to tell a story over a period of time, not just with one artist, but many artists over time?
So we have incorporated media into a few of our projects. But I will say, something that we're really cognizant of is artwork that will last the lifetime of the facility. We allocate a portion of our budget to the maintenance over the life of an artwork at a facility. And we are very thoughtful about that when we think about something with technology that may change over time, that we may not be able to maintain over time. So it is not impossible to do that, and it's something that we have done before, but we'd be really careful and thoughtful about the life of that project and how we would maintain it and if we could sustain it over the life of the project.
Thank you. Yeah, I just think, taking a look at that and potentially having that as an opportunity to see the unique changes that take place over time. Our communities are ever-changing. And so one thing that might be supported today might not be supported tomorrow. So we always like to have opportunities to change with our times that we're in. So just look forward to seeing the art. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Manke?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ashley, for the presentation. I live just a stone's throw from this facility, so I'm looking forward to seeing the art that goes in. My recommendation for someone who could potentially help with artist selection would be Karen Bagnall-Pogue. The Pogue family has been in this area for a long time, as has the Bagnall family. The Pogues own the Yakima Fruit Market, and the Bagnall family has owned much of the land surrounding this facility and still lives there today. So I think they can give a pretty good, at least 50-year history probably of that area and help with selection and then also any kind of ideation on what might be designed that relates to this area.
Great, thank you. That sounds like they've got a deep history here in Bothell, and we'd love to connect with them. That would be great, thank you. Thanks for the recommendation.
All right. I have a question for you. This is going to be a maintenance center. Like, this isn't going to be a place that the public is generally going to be engaging with on a regular basis. In situations like this, have you ever put the art somewhere in a facility where the public would be engaging? Like, is there a way to spread things out around the stride stops so that people can enjoy this? Is it opposed to have it be at the maintenance facility?
So we have artwork in development for the stride stations themselves, and we'd love to share more information about that. Today, we're focused on the Bus Base North because we were getting started on artist selection and wanted to come to this council to get some recommendations for artist selection panelists. The timeline for the integration into the stride shelters is a little bit longer. So Bus Base is, as you point out, it's not a public facility, but we're looking at the most prominent locations visible from the public for the artwork at this facility. And we also have artwork in development for the Bus Rapid Transit stations.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there, and I'm asking you questions that are scope-changing, so you're probably going to tell me no on this one, too.
It's okay.
But you've got your list of artists. Is there a way that local artists can apply to be considered as well?
We typically start with the roster, and the roster is made up of local and national artists. We have a policy at Sound Transit that we open things up to artists from across the country. We don't typically limit it to local, but there are a lot of local artists on our roster, and they've gone through a qualifying process. We're also looking for artists to take on new projects all the time. So if there are artists out there that we haven't connected with, we'd love to get to know them and keep them apprised of opportunities. But again, typically, we start with our roster, and the selection panel makes the final decision about who the artist is. So sometimes they find that someone from the community is important to them, and sometimes they look to national artists.
Perfect. And are the folks on our Art Commission also eligible to apply for the panel?
Yes, they are.
Perfect. I think you guys are going to like our Arts Commission. They're a really talented group of people, and I'm excited that they're going to be the ones that are running point on this. And I'm looking forward to seeing what comes of it. Thank you for coming out tonight. Really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I'm going to wave at the computer screen right here, like that means something to somebody. There we go. Bye.
Thank you for having us. Bye.
Thank you. Perfect. All right, next up, City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor, and I have three brief updates tonight. And one of them, the first, is just a contextual thing for something that's on the agenda tonight. So our consent calendar is a great opportunity of when we have things that follow a purchasing policy, and they tend to be, again, there's a path that gets us to approval, so it has its purpose. And then occasionally, too, there's something on there that's that plus a good news story. So I just wanted to highlight that, as you've seen on the agenda, there is the purchase of a ladder truck that is contemplated on the consent calendar for council approval tonight. And of course, there's the technical things behind that of it. It is anticipated in the budget. That truck has met its life, and it's also, there's a long lead time on ordering, and the prices of things, apparatus like ladder trucks are, much like a ladder, only going up. A broken ladder, I suppose, they do come down to. But so tonight, what I really wanted to highlight, though, too, is just the opportunity to, just as a reminder of, these are the types of investments that we make to keep our community safe and protect the community. Ladder trucks don't do any good when they're under wrench time, and we need a mountain in service. And also, just, again, an investment and a commitment to our first responders who are out there in their community every day. So just a note of gratitude to them as well. I know there's probably going to be some reflection on another great event from this weekend where we got to do the same thing, but just a note of thanks. The second thing, I'd just like to close the loop. Last week, there was a couple of things that came up as requests to be bringing back to council and not bringing them back tonight, but again, just want to acknowledge that you're heard, and we're going to be working on a plan to bring them back. So the two that I have noted is, number one, there was a question about tenant protections coming back during the arts presentation, so we'll scope that out, and I'll be communicating with council on what that looks like and when it'll come back. The other one, too, was from the council conversations, and playfully noted that while as staff, we tend to not get drawn into council conversations, did want to, on that case, make sure that we put together a good process of where we can have options for council to consider than not have you feel like you have to ideate and create on the fly. So did hear that, and we will be looking at some options, especially ongoing opportunities of where can we have council out in the community. Again, just want to acknowledge we heard you on that, and we'll add something to a future agenda about ideas of how that engagement might work. And then finally, also last week on the City Manager Report, we talked about the process that was going to be followed for filling a planning commission vacancy and then, as well as the Arts Commission. And so earlier last week, you will have received an email from Robin Schaefer, our deputy city clerk, pulling for dates. The plan is, for the Arts and Planning Commission recruitment, is to hopefully open the applications tomorrow, depending on how this conversation goes, and then leave that open through Friday, November 18th, so a month for people to do that. Folks who were in the pool before will be reached out to by the clerk's office to make sure that they know there's an opportunity there, and if they're still interested, their application can be considered, or if they want to resubmit, that's an option as well. The plan, then, would be, and this is where the ask and the clarity is, there's, the assumption is that we'll need to schedule a special meeting in order to accommodate interviews, and the proposed date that seems to be floating to the top is our fifth Tuesday, November 29th, which does follow the holiday weekend, of course. We have heard, Robin did a poll to see when people were available, and so far, she's heard from three. But if there's any conflicts with that, we'd like to hear about it tonight. And if that's the case, we will revisit the advertising plan. And I think with that, yeah, the main thing that we wanted to walk away with clarity is the potential interview date. Make sure everybody's in town, or if you're not, if you're comfortable with it moving forward. And after that, Laura and Robin will be prepared to communicate out the opportunity through all of our communication channels and open up the application process.
Fantastic, thank you. Did you have a question? Go ahead.
Just a question. Were you asking us to give you yes or no on the 29th, or no?
Yeah, if you're available on the 29th, or not available, more importantly.
Give you the answer now?
Yeah.
So my answer is yes. So instead of saying yes, send me an email, yes.
Perfect.
Same. I'll send an email, too, however.
All right. And if no objections, then we'll move forward on scheduling. All right?
Perfect. Next up is Council Committee Reports. Councilmember Zorn?
Yeah, it's real brief. LTAC, I think we're going to be getting an update from LTAC down the road, so I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time. I just wanted to let you know, some of the things that we covered in our LTAC meeting was, well, one, saying goodbye to Brittany. Very hard. And then I thought this was very interesting. We were looking at the analytics of Street Sense and how they've performed for us, and the open rate on emails is like 21%, which I guess is phenomenal. So I was glad to hear that. And then also, just, you know, little feedback on interest on Main Street. They run a blog. They've run it, I think, a few times on Main Street, and that's had the highest hits of people going and looking at the blog. So I thought that was really exciting. Also, most popular search for the City of Bothell? Coffee. I know. So, anyway, more good things coming, but I thought I would just run those few things past you guys.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember McNeil?
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. I did send committee updates on RPC last week. So, everybody should have gotten those in their inbox. We did have a special meeting last week of the NPRSA. Special meeting was to approve an interloan fund to fix a gap that we have in some of the major capital repairs that we're going to have on the senior center. So, we agreed to an interloan fund from King County that would help us fill that gap in the short term. The board was very adamant that we wanted to make sure we got those funds paid back as soon as possible so that we didn't bear any interest on that interfund loan. So, great things and good partnership with King County to help us pull that together so that we can fund a lot of the capital repairs that are necessary for the senior center.
Awesome. Councilmember Aldrichs?
I have a brief update on the North King County Coalition on Homelessness. Got to meet the new Executive Director of the Oaks. They've hired somebody, William Towney. And, and he was in attendance at the meeting. And we also heard kind of a follow-up to last week's open house on, and updates of the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. They're doing great work. They're moving forward with an, an interagency agreement for, for North King County cities, where we'll have our own special subregion, where we can partner together on addressing homelessness. And they just have always been a really great team to work with there at the Homelessness Authority. And so, yeah, I, I encourage people to look into their work. And there'll be future updates for council as well.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no more, I think it's time to go to visitor comment. The city said, "Accepted visitor comment in writing, as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the CD Clerk no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all city councilmembers and are part of the record." City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, we do. Mayor Thompson. We had one written comment submitted, and that was from Christian Joyner of the Bothell United Methodist Church, who wrote in regarding human services budget and the wages of human services workers. I do not have anybody signed up to speak live this evening. However, if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak, please come to the podium. You'll have three minutes. And I don't see anybody in the attendee room that is raising their hand to sign up.
Fantastic. Thank you. Projected agenda discussion. Does anybody have an item they'd like to consider for a future agenda? Councilmember Zornz?
I think that we may be discussing this a little bit on, as we talk about budget. But something that we need to start talking and thinking about is Station 45 has an extractor, which is fabulous. It doesn't have a place for our firefighters to shower. 42 will have one. If our firefighters have to strip and put their bunker gear in the extractor to wash off the toxins, they have to walk out through the bays, up the stairs, and down the hall to shower. Now, we two, a couple of us toured Kirkland, who is building their fire stations. One fire station they've just completed has a shower, like our 42 has, with their extractor. Another one that's being built has access to the extractor and the showers on the outside of the building. So, you don't even walk through the interior part, which is, you know, great for firefighters doing. They're just keeping, keeping it contained. But their, their thought of also doing that is if there was a community crisis and they were needing to shower community members, they would not have to walk into the fire station as well, which I thought was, I wouldn't have thought of it, but it was great planning. But I think Ben has had some discussion on, with the people who built 45, and what it would cost to retrofit and put a, they recommended putting a shower stall in later. I think staff wants to have a conversation about it as well. But given the cancer rate high among firefighters, which personally you are well aware of, I, I think that's something that we need to put on the radar and think seriously about.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate for our project conversation. So, we'll start, we'll start out tonight, which will be intended in terms of the budget presentation, to start cataloging what are some potential investments council wants to consider. And assuming that there's interest of doing that, putting it in, something in for the next budget, then we'll, we'll capture that and have a future conversation in November.
Perfect. Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Aldrichs and a second from Councilmember Manke to approve the consent agenda. Any comment? Nope. Doesn't look like it. City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Cobra?
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmember Dodd, absent unexcused.
Thank you. All right. We are going to take 10 minutes. It is 6:30. We're going to take 11 minutes, 10 and a half. It's 6:36. I will see everybody back here at 6:47. All right. Welcome back, everybody. First up on our agenda tonight, our first agenda bill, is Agenda Bill 22147, Clarifications Regarding Design Alternatives for the Sumamish River and Wayne Creek Restoration Project. And I am going to kick it over to City Manager Standard.
Thank you. And, you know, sometimes the title says, says it all. So, I think the important thing to know for tonight is that you are going to be hearing from Janet Gere, our Public Works Surface Water Supervising Engineer. And the purpose of tonight's update is, prior to going out, and there's very few things in our world, and especially when it comes to restoration, that is a city-only thing. There's a lot of regional collaboration and work with other agencies. So, as Janet prepares to start moving the ball forward, wanting to get some clarification from council and make sure that as staff, we're out doing the work that you're asking us to do. So, with that, I'm going to turn things over to Janet to lead you through the conversation.
Thank you. And good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm just gonna hit Slide Share. There we go. Okay. So, thank you again for letting me come and talk with you. During my presentation last month, we had several questions during the conversation and afterwards. And so, I wanted to make sure I came back and provided those details to you so that you could provide any needed direction before we bring those alternative concepts back for your consideration. So, we're going to talk about four things tonight. We have the historical data to share with you. Wanted to talk a little bit more about the King County Regional Trail Placement. Wanted to talk about some of the erosion concerns that we heard both during and after the conversation, and the regional efforts in the Sumamish River corridor. So, first, the historic data. We looked at two key times in history. One, we wanted to look before the Ballard locks were installed in the early 1900s, just to see, you know, before the Sumamish River was dropped by about nine feet. And then again, before the golf course was installed on site because they had altered a couple of those unnamed tributaries. And, and we wanted to take a look at prehistoric conditions. So, what you're looking at here is, from the Department of Interior, it's from 1871. And to give you a little bit of context, if you can see my arrow here, this area is right where the former Wayne Golf Course is located. And just to give you some of the depiction information, these little squiggle lines here are slopes. So, that's the hillside. These little plants in this area here are depicting marshlands or wetland areas. And of course, you can see the stream reaches throughout the Sumamish River area. So, a couple of things I wanted to make sure I noted was that there wasn't a side channel existing on site prior to the prior to the installation. We're not seeing any braiding of the Wayneeta Creek confluence area. And the, most of the wetland marsh areas where side channels would have likely occurred are on the south side of the Sumamish River. So the next one we took a look at is prior to the golf course. This is a King County iMap. We matched it up with our current data layer so that you could take a look for context. And you can see the orchard is still there on site. And what we found is these two streams before they were piped actually connected together here and then connected to Wayneeta Creek. And so that's why we've got those proposed in our concept design. So a couple of the takeaways here that we wanted to note is, one, because of the Ballard locks, we're not going to be able to bring it back to historic conditions. So all of those alternatives that we're going to bring to you, we are confident will work under current site conditions. And then we've got some options that, of course, are not part of the historic conditions. We'll add really good salmon habitat for your consideration. So the next is the King County Regional Trail section. So one, a couple of the things that I wanted to make sure I noted was to give you pros and cons of the two options and then make sure that we were clear so that when we come back for alternatives, you can let us know how you'd like to move forward. So Trail Option 1, that is the one that's, that goes like this here. And that Trail Option is currently in the easement acquisition with King County. So that's the current placement for the King County Regional Trail, and you'll see that come back on the alternatives. Pros of this is that it's outside of the passive use area, and it's close to the Sumamish River for viewing purposes. The cons with this one is that it is within the Sumamish River Stream Buffer. It does prevent the side channel option. So then when we come back to you, you will see this last section here that's dotted, if I can find my cursor again. That dotted section for Option 1, you will not see that there in the side channel option simply because it precludes the side channel from being there. And then the other cons are that it might make, like the sloping of the area is fine for the existing trail, but if we put the larger regional trail there, the sloping is, it might be a concern for actual placement on site. And then that area, because it's in the Sumamish restoration, is subject to hard surface maximums. So you'll just have to make sure we do pervious concrete or, you know, something like that to make sure that you're taking those hard maximums into account. The second option that was brought up by the Parks Board is this, where you've got this, this section is the same, but it stops at the passive use area. And what we have directed the consultants is not to have it go into the passive use area, but stop there. And so that's what you'll see with that side channel option. The pros of that is that it stays out of the stream buffer as much as possible. Placement in the passive use area can then be chosen at a future date if that's where you choose to have that trail section. And it can be sloped for ease of use by those utilizing the trail space. The cons of this one is that it may conflict with future use of the passive use area. It is not in the agreement, so we would have to go back to King County and make sure that they're okay with that easement change. And then that section, if we do not put the trail in there, we will do restoration planting, that type of thing. And so if that's planted, it's gonna curtail the opportunity for you to put that trail in that location at a future date. Both of these, for that reason, we want to make sure that we get to council directions so that you can choose to either have it stop here and then wait till your master planning and decide what you'd like to do, or we can have it continue through the site on all of the options except for that side channel option. So next, the erosion concerns. I just wanted to bring this up again because we did have several questions on this. The flow of the daylighted portions, right here, this is what we were just talking about. We're going to have those connect to Wayneeta Creek. We are going to have hydraulic modeling on the preferred alternative concept, and so we will take account of that full flow. We are going to make sure that the stream bank slope and composition is such that we won't cause additional erosion, and we'll consider those for stabilization of the area. Stream sinuosity is being considered in most of the designs, which will allow for sediment deposition and transport downstream. And the confluence, actually what we're looking right now, it's interesting because instead of just a widening, we're looking at a braided channel because that'll likely be the most successful. And it'll be interesting because then when you get those high-flow events, you can move sediment through into the area, have areas of deposition, and allow for it to meander naturally. So it'll, it'll be a neat feature on one of the alternatives that'll come forward. Next is regional efforts. You had asked about some of the regional efforts that are going on during the Sumamish River Corridor and making sure that we were participating in those. And so I wanted to let you know that I did go back to the King County Flood Control District, and they are, again, resurrecting that conversation with the Army Corps of Engineers to update the operation and maintenance manual for the Sumamish River Corridor. It was last updated in the 1960s, so I think that is a great direction, and it's about time that they, they update that. And we have asked to be a part of those conversations. They have assured us that we will. And then also, just wanted to let you know that they are willing to come and give you a presentation if you want to hear more about those regional efforts and provide any thoughts. Please let me know, we'd be happy to have them come in and speak with you. The other effort is Forterra, under a grant from RIA-8, did complete an effort with the, all the cities in the region for permitting to streamline any projects, especially restoration, going through that area so that they're not held up for a couple of years. And that was successful, but they wanted to expand it statewide. So there's a, currently a pilot project going on to streamline all of those permits. And if it's successful, then all, we are currently participating on, the community development is on the planning side, and we'll definitely let you know how that's progressing as well. And then I had to throw this historic site in because I just thought that was so neat of the historic museum that this is the Blythe at the corner of Wayne. So really need to see the change over time. Next, we wanted to talk about the schedule. I just wanted to remind you that, again, we've been doing outreach from July through November. And we did decide that what we're going to do is bring the concepts back to you. Oh, and this needed to be updated. We're bringing the concepts actually back to you now December 6th. And that's because we'll have the full month of all of the residents and every, all the stakeholders being able to provide comments. So we can come back to you with all of their comments. Then you can look at all the concept designs, we decide which one we want to move forward with. And then we should be able to bring the final package back to you in January and stay on our timeline for the preferred alternative. One of the other things I did want to point out is some of the, the cost estimates are coming in between $6 and $9 million. And so while we have construction slated on there for summer of 2024 and '25, it's really going to depend on which alternative is selected and how much grant funding we can get at the time. So with that, I just wanted to say thank you for your time and ask you if you have any questions.
Councilmember presents.
Well, thank you for this. I always love it when you have something to share about our waterways. So yes, on a presentation from King County.
Okay.
Blood, that would be great. And then, as you were showing Trail Options 1 and 2, one of my frustrations with the wetlands at UofDeb Bothell is the lack of ability to go in and see things. They have just one boardwalk that goes out there. And so when I was looking at Option 1, I thought, oh, that's really close to the stream bed. I had this blush of thought of. Wouldn't it be great to have some viewing areas where you could walk down and see this? But past experience tells me that's probably a no-go. So, so then I started rethinking, well, maybe we should keep Option 1 in there if it's pervious trail service because that would allow some accessibility for people to actually look and see this, what's happening in the slough, right, without?
Right, yeah, and that is one of the, the pros of that area. The other thing to point out of those two stars, there's one and two there. Those were suggested, and so what we're looking at, here, let me see if I can highlight those for you.
Oh, I see.
So this one here and this one here, we were proposing to, again, because we're not installing the trails, but we'll leave it open and not plant that area because these were suggested as really good areas to be able to see up and down the stream. So we'll leave both of those as viewing corridors.
Right, okay.
And then, like you said, we can, that's one of the pros of leaving it here is that you can actually view the stream. So that's certainly something that's in already, you know, in the existing easement.
Right, and if we don't use it, then we, then that door closes for any future rethinking that maybe we would like to connect that trail. Am I understanding you correctly?
Correct, so the way we would have it is, we would just have it stop with that Option 2, just stop at the passive use area. And then that's for you to decide at a future date where you'd like it to go. If you'd like it to go into the passive use area, if you'd like it to skirt the edge of the passive use area. But you're absolutely right that once we restore and plant, because of the constraints on that salmon recovery, the acquisition, you'd be hard-pressed to remove any of that and place the trail if we plant and restore the area.
Okay, so another question. Restoring and planting, does that mean just take out the invasives? Or are you talking about putting some areas for salmon to get some shade relief?
Right, so both. So one of the options comes in, and we're just going to plant, Rick, like you said, remove invasives and plant native species. One of the alternatives has a, it's more like, I would call it a backwater channel void, then, it's not really a side channel because it's not connected both ways. It's just kind of a backwater, and you'll see that in one of the options. And then with the braided channel, there'll just be a little bit more grading and alteration within that area.
So we, so if we were to do Option 1, would we not be able to do a backwater channel?
I believe it's going to conflict.
It's going to conflict.
And so you'll see those, you'll see those come back, and then you can, you know, decide what you'd like to do. But I just wanted to make sure that you had time to consider it because it is a big decision of where you'd like that to go.
So you're not asking us to decide tonight? You're just saying, these are the things, and you get a chance to ruminate them?
Yes, exactly. So when we come back, we'll ask you, where would you like the trail? And which option would you like? And we can actually change out the trail and a couple of the options. And so that's why we want to make sure we're clear.
Okay, all right, I have no more questions, thank you.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Janet, for this presentation, especially for the, the historical resources that you were able to share. I'm just very impressed that you went back into the 1870s for a map. And so looking at the, I'm glad you have this up on the screen still because I have a couple of questions. One is to orient myself. Where is the Burke Gilman currently in this area?
This is, it is not in this area.
Okay. How does it connect?
So this, okay, so again, I gotta find my arrow.
It's on the other side.
So right here is the connection with Blythe Park.
Okay.
And if you walk through here, the Burke Gilman is just down a ways into Blythe Park. Nick, do I have that right?
Actually, technically, it is the Sumamish River Trail through there. So, but you do have it right.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification. All right, so that's helpful, thank you. And then I want to talk about salmon behavior for a minute, if you could help me with that. If we don't have a back channel, and a good example of a back channel is what, what was installed at, at Bothell Landing on the south side of the river. I think there's one, one good example of it.
That Fingrill Island in there?
Yeah. And so I know what you mean by, by potentially putting one in there. But would these tributaries, Wayneeta Creek, the streams getting connected through, would those be places that salmon would find happy habitat without a back channel? Or is there, is there like an additional benefit to having that, you know, the, the streams connected and daylighted and having a back channel? So tell, tell me what would make the salmon happiest?
Happiest is a good question. I would say all of those scenarios would. The grant funding that we have is focused on Chinook. And Chinook will only utilize that area that if we make like the braided channel, that back channel, they are going to utilize that area for resting as they're migrating through to spawn. And then as the little Coho and Chinook are coming down, they'll use that as rearing habitat. So those are the two main functions. The backwater channel, it, it can provide more habitat. It's the one that I'm a little bit more worried about simply because if they don't have the correct connection with groundwater, it's most of the, most of the time, it's not going to be utilized. I'm personally excited about the braided channel because that's going to provide a lot of habitat, a lot of opportunity. And Chinook will likely use that one the most. The Coho are going to go a little bit further up Wayneeta Creek. Until we get to the sloped area, they'll utilize more of the space. But focusing on the Chinook, one, the cold water, that when we connect with the groundwater, and that's going to be a benefit no matter what we do, any of these scenarios. And then we're also daylighting those two creek sections and bringing those into Wayneeta Creek, which will provide more flow. And especially during the summer months, that'll be a nice cold water refuge which will encourage them to come in and rest as they're migrating upstream. But I would say, I still think that they're all great options. I don't think there's a bad option in any one of these. The side channel is the one that gives me the most pause only because of the one that we've got going upstream right now. It is on, it's in lethal conditions during the summertime. So every time we find Coho in it, I'm a little sad for them. So I'm really hoping that the more the shading that we've got going on in there, we've got a monitoring report that's going to give us some recommendations that we can make some adjustments on. But it's the most complex, and it's the most likely to fail, to be honest. So I would say the third or fourth option of the braided channel or that backwater channel would be good.
I really appreciate that. That's a, a very detailed and complex answer. And I, it just is so good to hear, so thank you. And, and so my understanding then, if, if it were to proceed with the braided channel, that would not interfere with the, the trail connection that you are, that you're proposing, the Option 1? And you could do Option 1 with the braided channel? Is that my understanding?
We can, and we'll bring those back, you know, for further conversation with you. One of the things you'll have to take a look at, at that time, is the bridge. And I know Nick's going to have more conversations with you about that. That is going to be a constriction point. And so the braided channel is a great option, having more wetland space in there. But that's going to extend, you'll probably have to have some type of boardwalk or raised area. And then that, that bridge will have to be addressed because you can have it in the current conditions now. But I'm, I'm assuming over time, as we get more flow in there, you're going to need to, to elevate that area and expand that bridge.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. Fascinating, as always, especially when I see voids.
I know, I told him I was going to bring him up here. If you want to hear soils or anything.
The question is, for me, is not about the technical, it is about the costs. You mentioned between $6 and $9 million. Which is which? Or does it, depends on the configuration of each, the costs will vary for each option?
The costs will vary for each option depending on, you know, because again, we can mix and match some of those. But when we bring them forward, the side channel is the most expensive option just simply because of grading and sloping and a lot of the construction work that we've got to do on site. The least expensive is if we just daylight those two tributaries and, you know, plant natives, remove the invasives, that kind of thing. That will come in as the lowest-cost option. And then the, the other two are just in the middle. And as far as the, the funding goes on that side, we've already got a plan for the various grant dollars that we're going to go for to make sure that we're successful. And there's a lot of people regionally that are really interested in this project. And so I think we'll be successful in getting funding. It just may push the timeline back, is the only thing.
Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. I am super excited. I am so excited we have an expert on this right now. So your knowledge is impeccable, so thank you. Just listening to these conversations now versus a few years ago, a short few, six years ago, is amazing. So the work that you guys are doing is, I, I can't stress enough how many generations are going to enjoy this forever. So a lot of questions around a lot of different things here. One is the grant funding. So we have huge opportunities, huge dollars have come into this project already to save the land. So making sure that we're doing what we need to do to do our part to be great partners, both locally and regionally, with King County and others throughout the region, I think is going to be important. So we can bring that $6 to $9 million or those funds to match our funds so they go much further. So I know you guys do a great job with that, so let's continue to focus on that, what we need to do to ensure those dollars come in. There was a grant that I believe is like $1.5 million for that trail. Is that still available to us as part of this project? Or would that, or is part of that gone? How does that, how does that look for us right now?
So Nick, I'll let you answer that one.
So as part of the King County Parks Levy, there was about $2 million that was set aside for that area. We did, however, use $750,000, or King County used $750,000 to purchase five parcels that will be coming back to you to consider whether we take those over as well later next year. So right now, there's about $1.25 million sitting there for the trail project.
Fabulous, thank you, Nick. So that, that's an opportunity for us to, to connect. In that connection, Councilmember Aldrich alluded to, you know, In that connection, Councilmember Aldrich alluded to, you know, where is the Sumamish River Trail, Burt Gilman Trail? I think the connection piece is the piece that I'm really interested in having a discussion on is how do we get folks from one side of the bridge, what I call We Need a Way Bridge, to the other side? How do we connect the trail to the south side, you know, to folks to go to Tolt Pipeline, mountain biking, the things like, the biggest part of that whole back nine is active space outside of the conservation space, right? So how do we get folks through safely? How do we create opportunity to get them through without disturbing and creating those opportunities for the fish habitat? So I think if we can find a way to continue to work on that, I think that would be great. And I'm just kind of going off, I got a ton of notes here, I just wanted to read off real quick. The, the side channel, you talked about the braided, the side channels and the different things that we can do in there, and you alluded to, some may work, some may not work. Does that have any effect on the mouth of the river, meaning that right now, we're seeing an all-time low at the mouth? Like I've, this is the first time I've seen it that low in a long time. So the question is, is the Army Corps doing anything to, to remove some of that sediment that's continually building year after year to hopefully help with the projects that we're doing upstream?
Right. That's part of the conversation that we have started with them, again, because of that maintenance and operations plan being from the 60s and we haven't seen anything recently. And there's a big push, especially from the city of Kenmore, to get something going regionally together. So we'll definitely be talking about that. I will say that whatever we choose, we're going to have to create that connection. And so that'll be part of our project as well as, you know, removing that sediment that's in the way, that's going to inhibit the success of this project. So in, you know, in the short term, we'd be removing some of that sediment, but we're just going to plan for it to be there in the future. And so that's the, the idea is that during those high-flow events, you're moving it and you're hoping that it'll deposit in the areas where you've set up so that it can still establish that good connection with the, with the river. And then the other thing is, we just got done talking to the Beavers Northwest, because as I'm sure a lot of you know, they are there and they're going to be in there. And so I'm making sure that whatever we design, you know, in a couple of years, hopefully, is factoring them in because they'll likely build dams probably every 50 or 100 feet in those sections. And they really like bridges as constriction points. And so we're going to do whatever we can to make sure that they're not backing up that sediment further. And I have a good partnership with Fish and Wildlife already to make sure that we can move them, remove those ones where we don't want them to be and encourage them in other areas and so that the project will be successful.
Fabulous, thank you. I think there was a local student artist that went to, I believe, Oneida High School that just did a mural of salmon in Kirkland there. So amazing, amazing story there. And then lastly, I just want to speak to the historical slides that you showed. Those are some amazing pictures. And the one thing that I noticed is that obviously the locks were, changed that flow of water dramatically, but the interesting thing that I noticed is you can still see the same landscape. Like if you look at the old bridge, the way it came into Bothell. What I'm interested to know is in 1871, am I, did I hear you correctly that that apple orchard was there in 1871?
No, the apple orchard that we were looking at was in 1936.
1936.
I'd have to go back and, and look at the records to see what was actually on site at that time. I can't remember if it was the Brickyard. Do you know by chance, Nick, of, of the progression or no?
Yeah, we'd have to bring that back, but there was a Brick, Brickyard there and some other things as well.
Right. I think it was prior to the orchard was the, was the Brickyard, but I don't know when that occurred.
Yeah, so 1936 is pretty much when the apple orchard was there. Is that sound about right? And then in that, in that photo, was the photo from 1871 with the house or was that 1936?
Let me go back. This one here, I'd have to go back, I think that was early 1900s. I think this one was 1906. I don't want to misspeak though, so I'd have to bring that back and tell you exactly when.
So we became a city in 1909, is that correct? Right? So this photo's around that same timeframe?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, it's just amazing to see something like this with the, I think that's a steamboat going up the river and just to see the landscape of no trees and to see the trees that are there now is so amazing. So thank you for sharing this. Hopefully we get to learn more about this land and how far it's come. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Manke.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I also enjoyed the photos and the old maps. I get a kick out of that, just like the rest of my council members, fellow council members do. My only question is around the impervious surface limits. If we use pervious asphalt, does that count 0% towards impervious surfaces? I'm not as familiar with the pervious asphalt, but is there any imperviousness to the pervious asphalt? I guess that's the best way I can think of to phrase that.
Yeah, Boyd, I'm going to defer to you on this one.
It really depends on the regulations. Sometimes it's a 50% threshold and sometimes it's just modeled to see what you do. So that really will depend on pervious agencies, what.
Right, yeah. And that's what I was thinking too, is it'll depend on King County is the, is holding that easement of what they consider. And yeah, when we come in with development projects, it does depend sometimes.
Okay. Have we ever used pervious asphalt on any of our current trails?
Yes, I believe we have. Nick, the trails are maybe, I don't know, Aaron, if that would be a better question for you. I know we've got pervious asphalt.
So on parts of North Creek Trail, we do have some impervious asphalt, or pervious asphalt, excuse me.
Great, thank you so much. I have a couple of questions. On the trail, it seems to me that it would be nice to have a trail that goes from all the way on one side to all the way on the other without it stopping in the middle of what will someday be something. Is there a way we could run the trail, like just inside the passive use area, kind of around the edge? I'm doing this like it means anything to you. It's helping me in my mind. But like basically just take up the edge of the passive use trail so that we can get something built all the way through without taking up space that we could use for habitat restoration?
Right. You know, again, because of this project, we're not actually funding the trail. And so we're just leaving the space available, whatever they've set as, you know, the set aside, and not planting or not developing, you know, anything into that area. As far as the funding goes, I don't know, I'm assuming we'd be working in concert or that, Nick, that would come back as a separate conversation?
Yeah, so it's slated to come back as a separate conversation. It was one of the capital facilities projects that we brought forward. And we'll begin that conversation with King County next year.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll have that conversation totally separately. In that case, I don't need to give any direction on that tonight. Are you, are we working with the tribes at all as part of this process?
Yes, so we are engaging them, you know, like we do with, with any of the projects. As a staff member, I'm reaching out to their staff. But because they are sovereign nations and there's a specific way that each tribe wants to be dealt with, and there are six that within this area that consider it an area of interest. So we have reached out to them. They were invited to the cultural resource survey. They're invited as part of the stakeholder groups. But where we typically get engaged with them more is once we've selected a, an alternative for preliminary design and we go through the permitting process, they come along with Army Corps and they provide really good direction at that point. We engage with them a lot more during the permitting. So basically the next phase.
Okay. Is there a way that we could get involved and it would help that relationship or help further that at all?
That would be a good question for Kyle.
Yeah, I'd say that that's something that we should revisit in the total context of our DEI efforts. Looking at it, again, I've had some experience in past roles and as noted, there really is a government-to-government function there. And when we have good intentions of reaching out and building relationships, I just say that the, the main thing is, is we, having time and deliberation really pays off because once something is floated as an idea, if we don't do it, it's in context of just reinforces a distrust. So we want to be really deliberate and really cautious and making sure that we're all on the same page with what we're asking. So I would just say, let's look at that through the lens as we continue on our equity journey.
Totally. And just being clear, I wasn't necessarily asking to do something, anything right now, just more of if there's something we can do to help further those ends and if there's a way we can help make that process be better, please let us know.
Yeah. And I think, I mean, again, sort of reiterating that yes, the answer is yes, and it'll be in the context of our overall plan.
The last thing I want to do is make any even implied commitments and not follow through on them. That's a tradition I'd like to leave in the dust.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I think that's it. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Unless Boyd wants to talk about soil. All right. Next up, we have a study session. Agenda Bill 22148, the consideration of the preliminary 2023-2024 biennial budget. Kyle, but over here, I'll turn it over to you.
Diving into the, to the center of the ring, it's kind of fun to be able to introduce myself. This will be hopefully one of the few times that I do this in my career here. All right. Look at that. We made it. Well, good evening again, Mayor and Deputy Mayor and members of the City Council. And tonight, as you noted, we are here to kick off a process to discuss the 23-24 biennial budget. And I want to acknowledge as we open up, that for me, this process started in this room in April, and it was in the form of interviews, where I got to meet the six of you. And again, pleased to have Councilmember Dodd who will be joining us. It's just coincidence that she's not here tonight, but we'll be following up with her and making sure that she gets the same information. As a candidate, when we talked about budget and the financial picture for Bothell, the key word that kept coming to me as I had done my research and listened to you and listened to staff was about stability. And the goal of in this, in this budget, let's look for some stability. And when I think about what, things that are stable, I think of it as foundational. So as we look to build and continue to grow, how do we make sure that we're doing so on solid footing? And with that, I also knew I wouldn't be able to do it alone. And sure enough, I'm thankful I didn't have to. So I just want to acknowledge before we dive in, just the outstanding work from the executive leadership team. And in a process of where we're just still in the getting to know each other phase, we got to talk about one of the biggest things that, that comes along and that we talk about and develop together and that goes cross-functional and is citywide. And I really experienced just an outstanding amount of support and I saw a lot of, a lot of behavior focused on what's going to be good for the, for the community. And, and that was very refreshing to see. That's something we don't always see. And I think we all get a glimpse of that here on Tuesday evenings, and there's been some shout-outs for some just outstanding professionalism that we have in staff. And I saw that in a big way in this budget process. And thank you to the ELT and to their department management staff for bringing forward options that resonated with the values that have been discussed here with council, as well as that, again, theme of stability of, there's big things we want to do for Bothell and first, let's make sure we're in good footing. I also want to introduce and thank Ted Ryan, who's with me tonight, our interim deputy finance director. And let me tell you, I've mentioned this to many of you over the last couple of days as we've talked about this budget coming forward. I'm well aware that as you hired a city manager, you want somebody who can navigate a budget, but you certainly don't want somebody who knows all the details of the budget because that's all I'd be doing. And the good news is, is I don't have to do that because we have Ted. And Ted has been through a number of these budgets with a number of different city managers. And I just really appreciate him for stepping in to work with me and my style. And I asked a lot of questions and knew that he knew a lot of answers and was looking for help. And he's, he's made that successful, so thank you, Ted, as we dive in. All right, so with that, I want to talk a little bit about the budget itself. And so before you, or what you've been received, received over the weekend and have a little light reading material, is the first, the first pass of this budget. And what you have then in front of you is a preliminary budget for '23 and '24. We're going to talk about some of the pieces and how we got here. But in total, over the next two years, then this is a plan, a financial plan that totals 375.7 million dollars. And again, in that effort of stability, what we're really looking to do is maintain service levels while supporting continued growth in the community. So there are some strategic investments that are proposed here to help us continue to support the Bothell that we're becoming while also not moving away from things that we're, we're already committed to. Tonight, this is a study session, and it's the first of several study sessions to be able to talk about the budget. And really, the thing that I'm posing to you tonight is what questions does council have to staff for staff prior to budget adoption? I'm hopeful, I'm going to be optimistic and say December 6th. That also means we have a fallback. We could also have a meeting on the 20th, but you know, I might be inclined to ask you if we, if we would cancel that if we, if we're able to. So let's just see how this process goes as we work together. What I want to frame too, before even diving in, is to really set expectations for then how we're going to handle questions tonight. Oftentimes, when we have study sessions, there are opportunities for follow-up, that we're, we're kind of forming something that's going to come back as a recommendation. Because we have a series of conversations and because I didn't want to design a process where we were bringing presentations that may or may not be beneficial to you and what you hope to accomplish in this budget process, really want to keep things open-ended. And so tonight, there may be some technical questions or questions around understanding of strictly what does this mean? And not philosophically, what does something mean over the next 10 years, but literally, what does this mean? And technical questions like what is this budget account? In that case, we'll do our best to answer those questions tonight. There's also then, what I'm interested in is things that you would like to pursue or know more about. And we got a, we got a taste of that during the future agenda discussion of, we already have our first thing on the list of, there's an interest from council of knowing more around what would a decontamination shower at Station 45 look like, right? So that we heard from, from, from at least one council member of, that's an interest that we would want to see. The vision for how we'll move this forward, again, just in full transparency then, is that in each succession of agenda bills that will come back before you, is there'll be an attachment that has a table that's capturing these questions. We'll show what was the question. Some of the things, like if it's a technical answer, even if we answer it tonight, or maybe there's a little more depth, or if it's a more in-depth question, we'll have a summary of the answer in that material. So it's published and we don't have to revisit it. It's very fair that as we have 111 pages or so of information to share and discuss over a series of weeks, we may not all remember what the answer was. So we'll capture it there. And then also, I'll commit to acknowledging the date of the council meeting of where either the information was provided or isn't intended to come forward. Basically then, we're going to walk away from tonight, not having had a whole lot of answers provided tonight, but as staff, we're going to have our active listening ears on. And using the questions and the things that council wants to consider, staff will work the rest of this week to look at what are the themes and what is the schedule of how will we fit these themes into the upcoming study sessions in November. So to do that, we'll look a little bit at the calendar. That'll give you a picture of where we've been and where we're going. I want to revisit very quickly the 2022 budget survey and inputs that we discussed back in April. There's a few financial forecast scenarios. Again, I want to get some, some pictures of where we're headed in your mind. And then we'll do a brief overview of the proposed budget without reading it to you. We could be here a lot longer if we wanted to do that, but I don't want to. And then we'll open it up for the questions. So getting back, we started already, I mentioned another bullet on here of the April discussion of when you considered who to hire as a city manager. And again, just can't thank you enough for the honor and opportunity. I was reflecting, and this is my eighth biennial budget that I've been part of as a leader making a recommendation, but the first time that I wasn't making the recommendation to a city manager, but instead having those received. So I don't take that lightly. It's a, it's an honor to be there. But we also then had a budget workshop in April, and I was pleased to join you. And I'm thinking back to some of the post-it notes and themes that were discussed there around levels of service and where we wanted to see. And some discussion as well about, the council has a desire to explore, are there different revenue streams or different funding models that we need to consider? And in full transparency, again, in this budget, we're not proposing anything new. There is the, the proposed 1% increase to property tax, but we're not looking at increasing anything else. I think let's get the, let's get our team bench built of getting a finance director on board. And I'm looking to build out my team in the city manager's office to really support those conversations and provide you the best information possible. So not bearing the lead, do it fully intend, as we've discussed, that we will be having a retreat in the first part of the year. And I think we can talk about what are some of the the things that you want to see most that really support? What are the what are the priorities that this council wants to accomplish? Then also talk to budget survey results. In July came back, we talked about values and priorities, and I do have slides in there to remind you of what those were. I will also say that in July, maybe was slightly more aspirational, thinking that we might have opportunity to invest more and do some more new things. I would say of the values that that we saw stewardship really ended up taking the lead of there's just a number of things that it's getting more and more expensive to operate what we have right now. We've seen, we know in the news about inflation, but we'll we'll stay committed to that. I think staff considered those values as they prepared budget requests to me. And as we report back out to council over the upcoming year, we'll continue to look at that and make sure that we're sharing highlights, not only what did the numbers of our budget tell us, but where are we investing in some of those values as well? Through the summer, there was also the CFP committee. And in September, we had a study session talking about those recommendations, and we're able to adopt them on October. That really ends up being a foundation of some of the big investments that we're making in over a seven year period. So thank you for that work. It really did help inform what ended up landing in this proposed budget. Also, as just going back to last week, had the utility rate public hearing. That'll be coming in in November, and the final rates that are adopted by council will then be put together in part of the final budget that's prepared for adoption. And then here we are tonight to kick things off. So then, moving forward, we have three dates in November already scheduled. On the first and the 15th, we will have budget public hearings to hear from the public on anything. Right now, we don't have listed to do any study session or question and answer, but I think that's also a possibility. And one of the things that I'll just commit to you as well is we'll look at the order of the agenda to make sure that if there's any information that we need to share so that the public hearing is informed by that information, we'll sequence that appropriately. On the 8th, we're also having, we're planning, you might remember back in September, we talked about using the November 8th meeting as a dedicated study session time, possibly even starting at 5:30, but really holding that to a couple of hours. November 8th, as you'll know, is the second Tuesday of the month and election night. And so come at 8 o'clock, there will be other other news to watch as well. So we'll try and accommodate that. And then on the 15th, again, the second public public hearing before coming back for adoption. And then we'll have any other needed council conversation with the hope then of December 6th being adoption night. So stepping back a little bit more, I know public outreach and engagement is something that is important to all of us. And I've heard that value time and time again. And so while not the end all be all, and I think we have room on a maturity model of continuing to grow and how we're doing outreach. And in fact, that's some of the things that we need to think about. How are we investing in as the organization? One of the investments that was made, and I applaud, is to reinstating having a budget survey. Again, this doesn't tell us perfectly what is the or the community looking at, but it does give some information to be thinking about what are some of the themes to keep on the radar. So there was a mailed survey and phone calls, got over 900 responses, which is a statistically valid sample. And again, I'm also still holding on. I think we had a great conversation at the retreat about Councilmember Aldrich's put together some thoughts around the but the survey through an equity lens too of realizing this was it's not it's not perfect. And so as we move forward, how are things that were some things that we could do to build on top of doing the budget survey? What are some other outreach methods that we need to do? And again, in the newness of this year of getting on board and having 90 days to put together a proposed budget and everything, that wasn't something that we're going to do. But the the desire and the value is certainly heard and will be part of our processes going future and asked questions about what are the big issues facing Bothell. There is a number of themes. This is from the budget survey highlights. You can find this on the website. The public can find this on the website as well if they want to look at this as they think about coming for the public public hearing and kind of grading on how does this work? Again, not all of these things are going to be made in, but I hope that the council and the community can see that these themes did inform where some of the investments are made, both in the CFP and on the overall budget. So we have things around affordable housing, managing growth. Growth is usually on both sides of the equation. Sidewalks, improving sidewalks and in being able to get around, addressing homelessness, thinking about human services. The number of parks, there's actually praise for that. And yet we also know there's a desire for even more. So different things, different factors that we can consider and that really help guide what's the long range vision for the city. And I think this will be important information to, again, consider once we're thinking about a council vision next year. You'll also remember, if you hadn't met Ted before, you got to see him as he walked us through a couple of different scenarios. And it started with one scenario where there was an anticipation of what would be the consumer price index that would lead to cost of living increases and some assumptions around what would be the maintenance and out and and operations costs going forward. The first model was at a 5% rate, and we saw what that did to our end fund balance. Then we had the kind of the doomsday scenario of 8%. And of course, we're all laughing because it came in at 9.5%. But again, much like this budget, none of this is perfect. These are all things, it's a plan that we're going to have to adjust, and life is going to throw us curveballs. Uncertainty is the only certainty. So just wanted to throw that in as a reminder. But another scenario that we didn't look at then was also, I know there is a lot of interest in what would it take to restore services to pre-pandemic levels? What I wanted to show is that one scenario that certainly is on my mind as I went in is what would it take to do that? But also look at how do we build in the CPI number that that came in of 9.5% and honor the maintenance and operation cost increases that came in from departments of what is the actual cost of continuing our level of service, which was one of the commitments. But again, from that budget workshop, I heard from council of there was no levels of service that we were interested in diminishing. If anything, it was raising them. And so that's where the revenue conversation went in. Not to say that we were going to increase revenues, but just let's look, explore that and what opportunities would be there because we understand that the cost of doing business increases. And sometimes it'll go down, but most of the time it increases. So this scenario, what you'll see and what's important is there's a couple of lines that I draw your attention to on this one. So the the main general fund line, which is the second one from the top, is really our traditional end fund balance. The green line reflects that the previous council showed some wise stewardship themselves in terms of creating a $3.5 million stabilization fund, knowing that a recession would be coming. So there was the opportunity to the the financial conditions had that, and the council decided, let's create it. So looking at that and thinking about, so what is our financial obligation? Is that our policy tells us that we need to have a 90 day reserve of the general fund level? And that's the purple line. And then 60 60 day is the if we're if we're diving down down that far, we've got a problem. So there's different things in our policy that we would say, but those are generally what we would look at. Well, as you can see, is we don't get very far into 2023 before the general fund line crosses with that 90 day reserve policy if we tried to restore and keep up with what we're at. So that was what that told me pretty quick is, okay, that's not what we're going to do. Before you then is the new scenario that's proposed. And again, not perfect, but there's a lot of great progress that's been made in terms of where Bothell has been in the past. So with this, you'll see that including the general fund stabilization fund, we do stay above the the 90 day reserve fund through this biennium. And if you if you do include the green line, we're actually into 2025. What I would say in my experience with having these is like, as we look at updates coming forward over the next couple of years, it's good to always have this in mind because our goal needs to be pushing that crossing of the lines out further and further. And there are opportunities to do that. Life will not only just bring us bad news, but there will be good news. There will be a grant award. There will be maybe inflation slows down a little bit. Fuel prices will go down. We'll have different scenarios that'll adjust this. But the important thing is to keep an eye on it. And it is one that that I know as the city manager, I look to our finance staff of knowing every time we're making a decision on any new investment during the biennium as well, what does this do to our financial conditions? Because it's it's what we what's what we have to really put our focus on. The other thing that I just want to show Ted that I listen to him because he's good at reminding me every time. There's been many times in his career when he's presented these graphs where the bottom line of where like the 60 year where the reserve lines are close to is zero. And so we are fortunate that even in this scenario, like going out to 2028, you'll note we are saying above $10 million in the bank. Now, again, that's not in and of itself what our policy is. Our policy is 90 days. But just remembering that there were there in some of your tenures even, there was times when we were looking at, we were really close to to not having much, much in the bank. And so I'm really thankful for the the actions of previous staff and councils. We we should, even though we have some uncertainty, we have inflation, we have all these things in front of us. That's something to celebrate, that our financial condition is is better than it has been in the past. And I think the goal is to let's keep improving that. With that, just a few quick highlights of the overview, and then we'll be turning it over to hear from you and what you would want to know more about as we continue to have a November of overview of the budget. So again, I mentioned the the values that were captured from previous discussions. We committed to equity inclusion, engagement and transparency and stewardship. And like I noted, there may not be multiple investments for each of these. But as we talk about things going forward and as staff prepared the budget, these were all values that we held on to, including then our organizational values. And also, this is the more aspirational one, is where I was thinking that we would bring back forward some form of outcomes. This came from the retreat and our facilitator was working with with council to try and put together some categories of how we would look at the budget. Again, in this budget scenario, we're probably more when it is something about we're taking care of business. That's probably the outcome. But I think that this is worth holding on to. And as certainly as the questions come up tonight, as we prepare to come back with study session, we'll look at honoring some of these these groupings. And then certainly in a future retreat, as we talk about vision and priorities, I think that there's an opportunity there too. Deputy Mayor.
Number one, I'd like to acknowledge that there's no smoke in the background of this picture.
It was it was a sunnier day, yeah.
It was a nice day. And the previous slide where you showed your, not this one, I mean, the one with the charts.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this one. Two questions. Number one, are you? I I I trust, I am confident that you're keeping an eye out because this is just a two year budget, right? But then, when are we going to start talking about how do we extend this crossing point? We don't want to wait till the next discussion of biennial budget because then by then might be struggling.
So some of that comes from when we have our quarterly updates for you. Some of that comes from every time we have a conversation when there's a new idea that's going to that's going to take funding. But then also, as we look at our forecast. So currently, our forecast is informed by the Puget Sound Forecaster of taxable sales. But we know that there's, we just have to pick up the newspaper and know that there's potential recession on the horizon. So as revenues change, we'll be looking at this as well. And it's one of those things where then the commitment is, is we don't look at two years and go, oh, my gosh, it moved. We didn't realize it. This is something that we're consistently keeping an eye on. Ted is running scenarios. And if there are corrections we need to make, I guess the important thing is to remember this is a two year budget, but this budget is a plan and plans can change and be adjusted. So if there's something we didn't get right, either we should have added more, we have the opportunity to amend the budget at any time, and we'll scoop it up at the midterm next year, and we'll true it up to to reflect where we're at. But also, if revenues start slowing down and we have to make other choices, it gives the latitude to do that. And again, tried to present a budget that we don't have to be too reactionary to do that, that we're not squeaking by on the margins, and we can watch as the revenues or the projections fluctuate. But that's hopefully that helps get a vision of how we'll manage this together. And I would also say that, you know, as we do provide quarterly updates, you should expect to see where, how are we doing?
That's awesome because, you know, it's one thing to do this, but then to stabilize, you know, to your original opening statement. But then we want to set ourselves up for future, for the future also. We can't be in stabilization mode every two years, right? We need to.
Sure.
At some point, figure out how to make big investments into future things. So that's what my question was.
Okay.
Really trying to get that. The second the second question I have around this is, are you going to relate the the budget discussions, the, you know, the revenues and expenses and how they relate to this chart?
Do you let me get clarification? Do you mean in terms of as we consider changes the council wants to make? Will we talk about what the effect is to this chart?
No, as you have it, well, yes, afterwards, you're going to be adjusting these lines depending on, you know, because you'll have scenarios. But then, right now, how is the 2023, for example, what's feeding into these? Because you have general funds, but then you also have all the other funds as well, right?
Correct.
The chart just refers to the general fund, not all the other funds.
Oh, I understand. But I mean, we're talking about a 375 million or 400 million budget, which includes everything. Right? So but this chart isn't showing everything.
So the the policy around around the 90 day reserve really is affecting on the general fund. So that's where we look at the most. And I think fair to say that a lot of the more volatility or uncertainty comes around what goes into the general fund as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So at a glance, and again, this will be something we'll share and refer back to, but it's also all within the budget. So there's nothing, nothing numbers wise that you don't already have in front of you, but just kind of a makeup of to to the deputy mayor's question, this reflects the overall budget, how we get to the 375 number. And then the general fund, the breakdown. So we'll share this with council going forward and also compare to if we're if there are any proposed changes, we'll keep track of what those changes are.
375 million, but the table we have on the in the agenda, in the your suggested your your draft, but the PDF, I'm looking at the bottom right line. Tell me if I'm look at this, it says 404.
Oh, it's so very possible because as.
Things change.
Yeah, publication was on Friday, and I tried not to wait till the weekend. But so we'll true that up. Great question. So the new investments, and these are all highlighted within my transmittal letter as well, is one of the things that is a theme of this budget is getting back on track with asset replacement. There's been difficult budget decisions made in the past where a number of asset replacements were deferred. And so there is significant investment in both the general fund and the capital budget moving forward of making sure we're we're taking care of what we have. That also includes some fleet upgrades, which I anticipate we may have some questions about this evening. And then studies, some of the things that are pretty instrumental to the future of Bothell. So kind of capture those together. But things like human services feasibility studies, looking at our development services fee schedule, looking at electrification of fleet, and quite a significant investment in supporting the comprehensive plan process of having a concert comprehensive process that really is involving the community and pulls in that that theme or that value of engagement with the community. A number of human services investments in terms of grants that are available, as well as a proposed a proposed position to to work with that and also to support the study that is anticipated. Those are all funded by ARPA funding, and I just would call out, we'll look at some of those positions that, again, there's there's a method to that in terms of making sure that as we're looking at the future goals or we look at the fact that the funding right now is ARPA. I think there is a desire, we've heard from council, including in the retreat, around finding a way to make that sustainable, even when ARPA funding is no longer available. So having a comprehensive look at what is our human services infrastructure look like going forward? The CFP, again, we've had a study session and an adoption of that, and it's its own large document. But a number of the long range plans that were and 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 commitments around multimodal transportation, looking at different improvements of the bike plan, looking at parks investments, show up in there. And so some of them have funding for the next two years. And overall, we have a seven year picture of what it looks like. We've been discussing most recently at council, some public safety, specifically on radar investments, and then also community events such as the Summer Night Series. Overall, pretty modest budget in terms of additional FTEs. This is one that's. pretty modest budget in terms of additional FTEs. This is one that's a tough, tough one, is that as I'm getting to know the organization, you know, I have worked for much larger organizations, and so everything I look at from Bothell is at scale. But there's definitely, we have a talented staff, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of pressure at times on our staff. And so want to be really cognizant of that, of knowing that as this community grows, we are going to have to responsibly look at what is the size of this organization. Can't have both. But we'll also remain committed at looking at what are, what are alternatives and what are options of how do we make the most use of what we have, and be, be really cautious, again, as we might be going into recession. The only thing worse than adding positions is then having difficult decisions as a recession hits of eliminating them as well. So I mentioned there's two positions that are, would be term limited. And again, that's not to signify that it's not an ongoing need, but I think it really does show of where we're making a commitment of, we need to figure out how are we investing going forward. And we have an opportunity with ARPA. So while not a perfect and ongoing opportunity, let's also not miss the, miss the chance to, to use some of that funding to build for the future. The other position that would be ARPA term limited is Parks Capital Project Manager. And for those of you who were with us in the CFP committee, this is one of where how are we, how are we dreaming and looking at how do we grow our parks infrastructure and start visioning that, having conversations with the community and really getting some things on the page. Other investments, there's two where we would convert part-time positions into full-time positions, one being the DEI Coordinator position. And as the council, by way of background, if you do not recall, that was added in the last biennial budget, but then I think very wisely, a decision was made of using the funding for that FTE instead of contracting to do some assessments and looking at how do we move the organization forward. We're still waiting on some of the deliverables for that. So we wouldn't necessarily hire that DEI Coordinator on day one in January. I think we want to get the information from Shannon of, of what she recommends. But I do, I do recommend creating that position. I think even from the conversation we just had about like tribal relations, there's both within the organization, right now, we have a lot of, a lot of staff who are using their time, you know, on top of their day jobs to help push this cause forward. And it's an important one and a commitment that we all believe in. And at a certain point, we also need somebody whose day-to-day focus remains on what are we doing on our DEI journey, and also then working with the community to hear them and build the relationship and tying this all together. So I think there's a lot of work to be done there. The other, the other position that would be moving to full-time is a payroll specialist. This is actually something that the interim city manager was able to help support increasing from point five during COVID. I think one of the lessons learned that we have there is, again, not to, not to make it sound like the most important thing is paying employees, but it's pretty important. And so when you have, if we have one payroll specialist on the day-to-day, and something, something happens where they're not available, there's a real grind for the organization. And it's also a position that then has some capacity to help out in other areas. Our, our finance team is the, as the organization has grown and as finances become more and more complicated, that is an area where we're looking at, how do we make sure that we're responsibly managing the finances that we have? So that was an investment that I felt made sense to pull the trigger on for, for now. And then also a permit services coordinator helped keep up with development as we look at what are our fees going forward to, and are there other funding mechanisms, or are there other ways of bringing those funds in outside of the general fund to support that when we have growth, do we grow in our permitting? So with that, those are just some of the highlights. I know there will be a lot of questions, and each of you will have insights into things that you saw, questions that you might wonder, was that accurate, or just things that you'd like to see come back. Again, I will be in note-taking mode, as will a number of, of us, and the ELT will look at the questions that you have and make sure that we're spending the right time in November to answer them. So again, tonight, we'll focus on anything that's a burning technical question, and start cataloging and getting ready to come back to you soon. So Mayor, I'll turn it over to the council to start putting our active listening. Oh, and actually Ted might have that update.
Before, before we get started on other questions, to reference the deputy mayor's last question about the 375 million versus the 404 million, we, if we start with the 375 million, that's the total expenditure budget for all funds. And then we back out about $48 million, which represents transfers between funds. We don't want to double count those. That takes us to about 328 million. Not, $7 million of that is depreciation, which isn't really a cash expense. So we back that out, that good, takes us down to about 320 million. And then this, the chart that I think you're referencing, it also includes the end, the projected ending fund balances of all the funds, which is about $83 million. So that math gets you from 375 million to 404 million. And the reason it's presented that way, it's just a Government Finance Officers Association requirement for showing that the budget is balanced. If you look at the revenue chart in that right-hand column, that bottom number will also be that $404 million.
I'm just here to say that if you think talking about sewer pipes is exciting, Ted budget, you're gonna, you're gonna have a new fan club coming up. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you to facilitate questions from the council.
Thank you. Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you.
Your mic.
I pushed it once, and I pushed it twice. Here we go. All right. So have a lot to throw at you. So I will, for the sake of time, I will send this to you as well. So first thing is, yes, we definitely need to continue to find ways to push the chart further and further out, and ensure that we're being more than fiscally responsible with the actions and things that we take. As far as the extractor, yes, I'd love to learn more about that. Life safety is a very important thing, especially for our public service. You know, our firefighters, we want to make sure that they're staying safe. So definitely would love to learn more about the cost of that, and any grant opportunities that we may have for that. The deputy mayor brought up a great point about budget control and understanding how the ebb and flow, and, and those of us who work in, in budgeting real-time every day, there's ways to create workflows that kind of show you that when you add this, it changes this, it pushes this out. If there's some way, you know, maybe not immediately, but if we can some way get to a, a method in which we can create those workflows, cash flows, those charts that are real-time, to show us where we're at when we make these budget, budget decisions, that could help us to understand that when we do this, it really affects that, right? So be really interested in learning more if we have an opportunity to do that. I'd like to, to know more about public safety. We, we touched about radar and things like that. But some of us, for those of us in the community that have been hit with crime, personal burglaries, things like that, and hearing more and more of that, just like to understand more about what we're investing in our public safety, FTEs, things like that. I know it's getting more and more difficult to hire officers these days. Everybody's competing for the same officers. So like to understand a little bit more about that and what that means budget-wise for incentives to hire officers. Police and fire response times, what that means public safety-wise. What is there sales tax growth and decline over the past budget? And what does that look like in the future? What are we projecting it's going to look like in the future? I know that sales tax within our community may have changed with, you know, COVID, but is that going to change in the next couple of years now that we're kind of somewhat coming out of it? I'm not going to say we're out of it yet. But how does that, we're, we're projecting so much now because we went through it. But what does that look like for us in the future if now everybody's starting to buy things out of, out of city, right? So the budget growth and decline, we already talked about a little bit on how we can look at that real-time. How are we doing on city hall payments? What does that look like for sales of downtown properties? Do we have enough to cover? I know there was a, a big push to sell properties to pay for this facility. Where are we at with that? Understanding, you know, if we make budget decisions to spend money in one area, how does that affect the sales of the properties, the increase in the, you know, the marketability of those properties, what that, what that means for us to pay it off sooner? If we can pay it off sooner, there's a benefit to the community for that. If we can pay it off sooner, what does that look like? You brought up asset replacement. I think that's the one that wears on me the most, that, you know, obviously, we want to have, assets aren't just vehicles, fleets, but fleets can be energy efficient. What that means for potential cost savings for fuel and other things. Is that being fiscally responsible by, you know, updating our fleet, becoming more energy efficient? What savings can we obtain there that can then be pushed off into other areas to help us? So we're not increasing those costs. There's, there's a lot of talk around affordable housing. We're talking about, we just approved an Arch, payment for Arch. What is, what are our gains? What have we gained over the past few years in the last budget? What are we projecting we want to gain? You know, what are our growth targets? How are those, how are we meeting those growth targets in both Snohomish and King County? And how does that affect, when we talk about that in our budget cycle, what does that really mean when we talk about growth targets and what are we trying to accomplish? So I think having an understanding of what that is, would, through our budget process, would be, would be important. Balancing the overruns of the fire stations, just kind of understanding how that, you know, how we paying for those overruns, how that affects our budget, just kind of understanding that in real-time. Those are, obviously, those cost overruns come out of a pot of money from somewhere. So just understanding what that is. Maintenance, as we talk about our infrastructure maintenance on roads and things like that, some roads deteriorate further than others. And I know I'm throwing a lot at you, but having gone through several budget cycles, these are the things that, that constantly come to my mind, that maintenance and upkeep of what we currently have is something that we often tend to put to the back of a budget. And I think in order for us to say that we're being fiscally responsible, we need to ensure that we're taking care of our infrastructure that we currently have, and making sure that we balance it to where we can maintain it in the future. And when we create new projects, how are we going to maintain those projects? Understanding, you know, the staff here in Bothell is amazing with, with all the grant work that we do within the city of Bothell. Understanding maybe having a, something that we can, you know, digest during the budget process of what grants we've received over the past budget cycle, what grants we expect to receive in the future, so we can kind of balance and show how we are leveraging the money that we currently have, and the money that we're bringing into the grant process, I think is important. Again, staff does an amazing job with that. We need to celebrate what staff does with that. The ARPA funding is something that I personally want to understand a little bit more. I want to make sure that we're not spending one-time money in an area in which we won't have that money again in the future, so that we ensure that we're not, we're not budgeting something that we get one-time funds for, and then now all of a sudden, we don't have funds that we've allocated for that in an, in an upcoming budget. Thank you for your comments about past councils. I mean, every council's different, right? We have councils in the past that have done great things with the budget. We've had councils that have done bad things. But to hear that, you know, we've come from a place of being fiscally responsible and started to think about those things, and, and how we spend our money, why we spend our money, and what we're spending our money on. I think, you know, for this council, hopefully, we can, we can go down that same road and start to think about, okay, let's, let's make sure we're spending on the right thing, not today, but also into the future. I think that goes along with understanding what the community wants, what the community needs are, right? And understanding how we're growing and where we're growing at, and those, those infrastructure needs that we're going to have. Another one that's, that's near and dear to me is the DEI. We talk about DEI a lot. And I've sat on this council for six and a half years, and I am hopeful that we can find a way to be intentional and inclusive to people of color. You have a black council member sitting on this council, the first black council member that's ever been elected to the city of Bothell, and I have a voice. And I'd like to use my voice for good and for positivity within my community. And I don't speak for all black people in my community, but I can speak from lived experiences. So hopefully, when we talk about DEI, you know, indigenous people, people of color, BIPOC people, we look at those that are sitting with us. We have council members that are of color here, that hopefully we can listen and learn from them as well, when we have those conversations. Parks and Rec open spaces, I think, was one of the things that in the survey that was done, was at, is at the top of the list. What, what does that really mean to the community? I want to understand more. It's not just about open spaces or fields. But what is, what does a park really mean to the community? Because for me, seeing people out just enjoying even just the Wayne Park land, walking dogs, people use those spaces in many different ways. And when we talk about social and mental health services within our community, that is a service. Having that open space for our community members to be able to go and get out and just enjoy, you know, the natural stuff. Traffic, I know, is another big one. Understanding traffic flows. You know, when we say that we're, we want to create additional housing within our community, is that really creating additional traffic within our community? So having a discussion around that, understanding it a little bit more. And then again, I'm just going to end with the same thing I started with. We, we need to be fiscally responsible and figure out how to push that line further and further out. The community has told us loud and clear, they want us to be fiscally responsible. They want to be included in the discussions that we're having. They want to participate. I think each and every day, I hear from community members about different things that are important to them. So we do not want to be dismissive. We want to get out of the community. And I think that, you know, even having the meetings out within different communities, I think, would be great. And that's something I would do for, I don't need to be paid for that, right? I mean, that's just something I want to do. As somebody who's here representing my community, who's elected to serve them, to be their voice. So I know I threw a lot at you. Again, like I said, I'll, I'll send this to you. But having gone through this process several times right now, I think it's important that, that we have a lot of dialogue in understanding what we're doing during the budgeting process. I know it's your first one here, but I, I think we're in amazing hands with you. I'm super happy that you're here, and I know that we together will find a way to create a great budget for the community of Bothell. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. To add to what Councilmember McNeil has said, I have, I have some kind of specific questions. But I do like the sort of introduction that you gave, that stability in foundational areas is really good and necessary. But there are areas of growth that if we stay stable in those areas, we're missing out and passing up opportunities to grow and transform and, and to innovate. And so I appreciate you kind of leaving room for the, the flexibility for change in areas where we can grow. And, and I see that this budget does reflect that. Some really great proposals for stability, asset replacement, but then also some really great proposals for opportunities to grow. DEI, for example, human services. And, and so with that, I'm going to get into my questions. All right. So starting with studies, I'm aware of some of the studies that, that you've named, but there's also a couple of others that I wanted to kind of put out there for public interest, one of which is the Dog Park Study. There, you have a line item for Dog Park for $25,000. And I know that people are going to be asking, is that going to get us a new Dog Park? And I wanted just to clarify that that with, you know, more, more information on, on what that budget item does in terms of, of, you know, we're studying possible siting locations for Dog Parks, is my understanding. And like I said, glad to see that the human services needs assessment is included. But, and you also mentioned fleet electrification. Does that, the fleet electrification, does that work into an overall larger climate action plan, like studying how the, the cities impact on climate and environment? Or is it just studying fleet electrification? Could we perhaps broaden the scope of that study to look more at overall impacts on climate? That would be a question I'd love to hear, hear back from. I do appreciate the recommendations for hiring new staff. My, my mom worked in payroll for a very long time, and she was the only one who ever did it. And that meant that I had a lot of late nights in the office with her on, on the end, at the end of the month. And like, I was the kid in the office. So yep, let's be nice to our payroll people. And then, but, so the question I have about hiring is, it's been floated in the Human Services Committee that perhaps the Committee that perhaps the expanded DEI position and hiring on a Human Services Coordinator could be combined. Does this budget leave room for or give, is, is that part of what this proposal might be that, that the same person could have, be paid 0.5 Human Services, 0.5 DEI? Just because I know that we've talked about it. If you don't want to respond tonight, you don't have to.
Well, I'll just clarify. So there's two ways. I'll, I'll answer the technical part of that question and then if you want to get into the philosophical question, we can come back with some thoughts. But just to clarify, this is for two separate positions. They would actually then work both of them in the executive office, most likely being reporting to the same person. And so there is an opportunity for collaboration, but the presumption there is to not ask someone to wear both hats, but to actually have someone who, have two individuals focusing on each body of work. There's, there's definitely some opportunity for collaboration, but, but this would be for two separate positions.
Thank you for the clarification. If you wanted to come back with a philosophical reasoning, I would love to hear it. Next up on my list is school beacons. I hear from community members frequently that there are areas in the city where school beacons are not functioning properly and need improvement. And I know that members of the community would very much appreciate more transparency on how those service requests get handled and where they should direct them to. And just an idea of like what, in this budget, which beacons can we look forward to being improved upon, either replaced or, or installed new? So I, I know that there's some interest in that. On the public safety section, aside from being very excited that we're going to get Station 42 completed in the near future, I'm wanting to ask about the five police vehicles that clearly need to be replaced. It looks like that was delayed because of supply chain issues. And I'm wondering if this is an opportunity to, to purchase electric vehicles for the police department rather than, you know, gas, gas-powered cars? And what, what the feasibility of that might be and attitudes towards that from staff? Those are my particular questions that I welcome hearing back from at a, at a future, future council meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Manki, you've been waiting all year for this meeting, I know. I'm super excited to hear what you've got to say.
All right, I'll go. First, thank you so much for all of your work that you did putting this together. I know it's a giant undertaking, not just charts, graphs, but actually the narrative is something I really appreciated on the slides, understanding why costs were rising, what those costs were going towards. Incredibly valuable and I have not seen that before, so thank you for that. I think a lot of my questions were answered earlier this week, but I want to highlight just a couple of things for anybody that was reading through the packet. One of those things is on page 11, there's a line item for other tax just south of $10 million. And wondering if you could just speak to that, what it is and where does it come from?
I can speak to that. The vast majority of that is real estate excise tax. There's about $60,000 in leasehold excise tax, but the vast majority is real estate excise tax that we get from property sales.
That's great. Is there a chance we could rename it or retitle it to clarify what it is? I don't know if it, this is the official title or if it's just for the budget discussions?
We could certainly put a footnote in there. I think the other tax is probably a GFOA category.
Okay.
But sure.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful just for anybody who's taken a look at it so they know what it is without having to send in a request for it. Also on page 11, there's a debt proceeds line item. And I believe that's for the Bahala Public Works Trust Fund. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's funding that, that specific project?
Correct.
Moving forward to page 19, under the Legislative Department, one thing that caught my eye was just the, the level of legislative spending for our department. And I was wondering if you could talk about what, what all goes into that? I know there's more than just council salary and, you know, training and conferences, but I know there's, there's a couple more things. I was hoping you could just touch on those things.
The first one that comes to mind is your legislative lobbyist. That's, that was added in the middle of the last biennium, I think, just for the state side, but now the federal side's being funded as well. And if you keep going, I'll dive a little deeper here into some detail.
I think the other one was election services, if I remember correctly.
Oh, yeah, that's right. It's our, what the counties charge us for running our elections.
Great, thank you. I, I'm wondering if we can move the lobbyist funding under the non-departmental budget? And the reason why I'm making that request is it's, it is something that council approves, but it doesn't pertain to our salaries or maintenance and operations of our specific department within the city. I think the benefit of that specific contract or those two contracts is more of a citywide benefit rather than a council benefit. And I don't know how difficult it is to make that adjustment, but I, that would be a request that I have.
Yeah, we can take a look at that.
So, yeah, we'll capture that in the, in the list and then it is council's budget. So we'll get feedback from you. And I think just for clarity for those who may not dive into non-departmental, the good example of what we put there is if there's any organizational memberships that are paid whereby joining then the entire organization as a member. For example, I believe SCA is included in that or the Association of Washington Cities, those types of memberships. So the idea being something that is paid into that then is a benefit for the whole organization.
The last item I was hoping you could speak to was the street fund 101 on page 22. There's a line item for $100,000 for flashing beacons. And I know this relates to the question that Councilmember Aldrichs asked. Can you talk a little bit about what that goes towards? Is it towards current beacons that are malfunctioning or is it, is it new beacons within the city?
I would defer to the Public Works Director on what goes into that line item.
Keep going and I'll look it up.
And I think this might be, that might be a good one too, that we can bring back, especially because I think there's a broader question too around where are they located? So what I can foresee is we'll put that into our tracker, but also include like a map of some of the locations and everything. So we can try and put that in context and bring it back and touch on it in November.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. Looking forward to the future, as Councilmember Zorn's discussed earlier, the fire station 45, specifically the decon shower. I know there's been prior discussion earlier this year that I think has been happening on a one-off basis. And I'd like to explore the cost of what that would look like. Is it really a best practice in the fire services industry that helps with firefighter health and safety and something we're going to need for the next 30 years? Or is it something that is more of a preferred item? Would be really nice to know. I know there's a shower in 42 and there's a couple of new stations in Kirkland with a shower as well. So if you look at that objectively, it seems like it is a best practice that, you know, seeing that it's going in there and that we did put it in one of our own stations. But it'd be nice to know just overall from a, maybe an objective, you know, third-party source, what the, what the standards are, what the preferred things are, what the nice things are and what really does help. So we'd really appreciate hearing more about that. And then the other thing that's not included in the budget, but harkening back to about three years ago, is the, the body cameras for police officers. There are a lot of calls for transparency around policing and some good progress has been made, has been made on the eight can't wait. But there's also some calls for more transparency. I know we had our own officer-involved shooting a couple of years ago and we were very lucky that there was a Ring camera across the street pointing directly at where that occurred. They gave us some visibility into what occurred. And I think if we had body worn cameras, we would have additional insight and it would, we would not be relying on those third-party cameras throughout the city. So I would love to know, is there still community interest in that? I don't want to, I don't want to have a solution looking for a problem, but I know that this was brought up and was a big area of concern three years ago. And I don't want to lose sight of that if it is still a concern for the city. So it'd be great to know, is that a policy item that our residents still want? If so, what does the cost look like? I really don't like the idea of ongoing costs and maintenance and public records requests. It's not something that any of us would wish for, but if it brings transparency, if it's helpful, if it prevents potential liability from our city and gives transparency, transparency to our citizens, I think it's worth looking at. And I would love to know more about that. And then, you know, what would, what would community outreach and community involvement on policy formation look like? Because we would need a really strong policy before we implemented anything like that. So I know that's, that's for a different budget, different discussion. I know there's a lot of funding concerns around that, but there's also grants and we potentially have some money in our public safety levy that could be used towards that if the residents were interested in that. So just wanted to throw that out there for, for consideration in the future. And there's just some final pieces of feedback. Again, I want to say thank you. I've watched many budget discussions. I've seen many processes take place. And I think this is actually the most transparent and clear budget that I've seen in the, probably the last decade here. So kudos to everybody who worked on that. I also want to say that I think this is a, well, it's a foundational budget and it doesn't do a lot of new and extra things. It is going to build us and set us up for the future. And sometimes you have to do that. And we're in a very interesting economic time where we've just gone through a pandemic. We're seeing the cost of living increase. We're seeing sales tax fluctuating from people purchasing online to potentially going back to surrounding areas where we don't get sales tax from those stores. So we are in an interesting time where we don't really know what our revenues are going to look like, same with the housing market. We don't know what that's going to look like. So I appreciate that this budget is thoughtful and it's defensive, but also not cutting services. We're maintaining services. We're growing a little bit where we need to grow and we're maintaining that fully funded 90-day reserve. We're addressing the asset replacement fund, which has been woefully underfunded for many years. And as a community member who used to observe, I used to cringe every year when I saw that line item underfunded. So I love to see the investment here, knowing that these are critical to the operation of our city. It's critical to life safety. We have a fire truck that is out of service more than it's in service and that doesn't serve anybody in the city. So I love that we're addressing that. And I, again, I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I look forward to future discussions and I also want to say thank you for bringing it forward well in advance of the approval deadline so that we can have these discussions, we can ask these questions, we can have community engagement for, for a public hearing on it. And we're not going down to the final minutes of the final council session, still trying to make last-minute adjustments and, and get it right. So again, I can't say how much I appreciate all the work that's been done by staff in putting this together and the experience as a council member, being able to dive into the numbers, look at it and, and get good responses. So thank you.
Aside from diving into the question about a shower for 45, I don't really want to tweak the budget at all. I, I am eager, as James mentioned, to get out of the city hall obligation. And the quicker we can do it, I can't tell you how many doors I've knocked on where people have asked for, you know, doorbelling. And I, and my answer is, well, it sounds great, but we have a, we have a city hall to pay for. And so the sooner we can get out of that obligation, the better. But I don't want to do it at the expense of our reserve. And asset replacement, that is basic common sense. It kind of ties into my, my concerns about when we first got the ARPA money, my first reaction was let's, let's pay for things, get projects done, one-time expenses while we can, because the forecast is saying prices are going up. And I remember when we were talking at the first of the year about inflation rate and someone had, I, I don't know where it was, a real low inflation rate. And I, and I was saying, oh, I'd heard 9% and we've just been sailing past it. I hear, you know, talks that we really are already in a recession. I hope that that's just a rumor and that goes away, but being prepared for it is really prudent and I can't tell you how appreciative I am of you being cognizant of that. And then Councilmember McNeil, I just love your heart as you represent the people of Bothell. And your comments about DEI representation just, just meant a lot to me. And as we were having the list, I thought, don't forget about our heart of hearing. Don't forget about the people who are, if you were just to take a picture of them, you wouldn't necessarily say they're not in the mainstream, but you know, we have people who are not neurotypical. We have, we have people who are visually impaired. Those are all part of our DEI initiative that we need to be mindful and inclusive and welcoming of. They're, they're used to people repelling from them and that ought not to be. So that's just a rabbit trail. And then I guess the, I really appreciated the outcomes and activities that were in each department for 23, 24. I guess Seattle Times was reporting that Seattle's biggest concern right now is public safety. And I love to see how that was represented here in, in our, in our priorities. And I did look at legal and I thought, a legal just wants to keep, do not rock the boat. Your outcomes for 23, 24 were just, let's just stay steady and keep things, keep things, not rock the waters. And I, I just appreciated it. I do have a question about GIS. I saw that there was, one of the outcomes was for a request for other applications. And at an ADWC conference, I don't know, a while ago, I sat in on a GIS workshop and saw all the tools that were available and we had just very little. So I guess my question is a curiosity, what are some of the other GIS applications that we're looking to add to our arsenal? I'm sitting here thinking, does, do we have anybody here in staff who can answer that question?
At least it's online tonight, but again, honoring the, honoring the rules, we'll come back with some more information.
Okay, okay. All right. So I, I am curious about what the GIS, because there's so many great tools that, that are there for people. And all, all I can say is thank you for the, the foresight and using your brain trust to put a very thoughtful, careful budget together. And right now I have no qualms of saying, let's just, it looks good to me, except for that one question.
This is great. I held off asking questions, waiting for this. There are a few things from my structure, and we talked about this earlier, is the, you mentioned the values and outcomes. It would be great to see how those budget items, maybe at a high level, fit underneath each, how do we, like, you know, OKRs, objective, objectives and like structuring it that way so that we can quarterly measure. It's like we have these outcomes, are we progressing towards those? The other thing I'd like to, if it's a possibility, to see what is, you know, talk about being fiscally responsible and, you know, meeting the minimum so that we won't, we won't go to zero again, you know, there's the minimum. And then what's incremental from there, you know? So it's like keeping some public works, things happening, like that's absolutely necessary. Because if that goes away, then, you know, we'll have a, you know, a revolution on our hands over here. A question I had, we managed, and I know that was, as a resident, I did not notice, but internally maybe we have. Over the past two years, we managed to tighten our belt a bit. So there was a budget, but we did not spend the budget over the past two years. How did we manage to do that? Yet now we're even going over what we budgeted in the past two years. There is a question for me. It's a slight, oh, the ARPA funding, the positions that were, our, our values say that we are, we want to have we want to have equity and inclusion, and, you know, it's perhaps even part of the safety, healthy community, but we are funding the parks and recreation, which is important, and we've talked about that, I think, if I remember correctly, in the retreat. The park coordinator and the human services coordinator, we are ARPA funding them, which means by definition, they're not a long-term, as you specified, which means they're not, are they our values or are they not our values? Is that, so are we going to put our money where our mouths are, the question? So if there's a way we can make those actually permanent, then we can demonstrate that, you know, we say DNI is important, that DEI is important, let's invest accordingly.
One clarification before we move on, and just want to make sure, so yeah, what I hear from that is, those are both positions that are being proposed as limited term. You're saying, if we were going to make them ongoing and pay for them with ongoing expenditures as opposed to out of ARPA, what would that do to the budget scenario? So we can, and what are some options? So we can do that. But the other thing, I just wanted to clarify that it is human services coordinator, but the parks position is the capital project manager. So just for anybody that's listening, that's the position.
Yes, I said parks in general, but yes, the cap, which is, I mean, that sounds like a future-looking, if we talk to the CFP discussion we had.
Correct. Right, and that's in the, yeah, it's a position that was tied to the CFP.
I know, but it's a temporary one. I think if we're going to talk about long-term community, you know, quality of life, then maybe that should be a permanent thing.
Absolutely. I think, again, I think you had just said Parks and Recreation Coordinator position was the thing.
Oh, oh, sorry. Thank you, thank you.
So I didn't want anybody to hear that and see themselves.
Thank you for that, yes, yes, yes. Just being, coming from a community, again, from, speaking of heavily surveilled, especially the most recent, you know, I just want to put on the record that Chief and Deputy Chief, they know about this, but surveillance and tracking software, I will officially voice my concern over including those in the budget. The drone and the hacking software and all that stuff is something that I feel we need to have a discussion around, the use of those, which, you know, we've had really good conversations in the past, but it would be good to have even further discussions around those things. Oh, the most important thing, can we change the panels over here so when we look, our eyes won't kill us? Seriously.
That's why I'm sitting in the middle of the night, is to experience it in full glory.
I can't, I know, I can't even look at you straight. Oh, a question about the extractor, how come it wasn't part of the design originally?
The shower.
The shower facility thing. That's what's my question as it was brought up. I don't have, I mean, either or, four again, I'm just curious.
We'll tee all that up then, with the context of why and how we got there and what the rationale was behind it.
Okay, cool. Thanks. At the retreat, I remember we discussed a way to incentivize internet sales, since that's, we get that sales tax for that because it's the delivery address. Have we thought about how we can get folks, our residents, to shop more online, perhaps if we, short of us actually opening physical retail stores around here, you know, or allowing more physical retailers, which is the other discussion about middle housing and all that services around, but that's a future thing. Yeah, everything else was covered here with, from my colleagues, so those are the big ones, the structure, so it's easier to read, you know, here's the outcomes, here's what we are doing, and here's how we're spending against it, and then here's the particular, you know, gain we're going to have. That's it. Thank you.
Want to start off by saying something pretty similar to what Councilmember Manki said. Just the context around this preliminary budget is different than my previous experience, and I just, I really appreciate the amount of information that was provided, like, down to a list of the actual assets that we're replacing, like, that is not something I have seen in the past. As I was reading through it, like, I started writing my questions down, and then as I kept reading, I had to go back and delete my questions because I found the answers. I was like, oh, oh, look, they told us, like, that's cool. So, and it saves us all some time asking the questions here tonight, so everybody thanks you for that. I have a list that's probably not in order, but it's my list, so I'm going to it. The parks, it looks like we're putting three part-time summer folks in. Does that mean that parks operations is healthy? That's right, we're not answering the questions tonight. Sorry, it's just everybody else had already gone, so I hadn't quite figured it out yet. The other thing around parks and the position, the capital project manager position, I would love to use, and this is just like budget back and forth, but I would love to use ARPA money for something else that we have added since those positions were struck, and have that position be restored permanently. And I know that's a, it won't affect the budget this year, but we've added multiple positions to other departments, and we haven't restored what was taken away from parks. And, you know, if you go look at the survey and the budget survey, parks were really, really important. I'm pretty sure it was the top thing on the list, and I would like to see that restored with ongoing monies, even if it means something else has to be limited term. The planning department, I didn't see an extra planner in there. That's something I brought up in the spring. You know, we, if I remember right, got like two things to add to the planning docket this year, and I know that department's had a rough time with turnover and whatnot. One of those things was on the docket the year before and rolled over, so we really got to add one thing, and that's kind of a big way of how we make change and how we can make lasting change that'll, you know, we can point out after we're done. And it seems like we've kind of defunded our own ability to do that part of our job, and I would, I would love to see some extra staffing in that department that is related to future planning capacity. I love that we're doing the vehicle electrification study, because you have to, as you told me earlier today, you have to figure out how you're going to charge these things, where you're going to put in the infrastructure surrounding electric vehicles. I would love to put off vehicle purchases until we've done that. To the second half of the biennium, do the study, and wherever possible, I think we should be replacing with electric vehicles instead of fossil fuel vehicles. And the other question, and it's not really a question, but I know that there is a committee and a group that talks about these things, but we've got vehicles that are 2020 model year that we're looking to replace this biennium. And I'm just not sure how they're wearing out that quickly. I mean, personally, I know Councilmember Manki is going to be with me on this, the cheapest miles you get out of a vehicle are always at the end of the life. I mean, maintenance costing more than the price of a new vehicle, like, it's got to be real high for that, and I'm worried that we're replacing vehicles before we get to that point. Like, I'd rather just, like, let them die and then replace them, then anticipate that and miss out on all those inexpensive miles toward the end of its life, once it's already been paid for for years. I'd also like to know if there is an opportunity in any way to replace cars with electric bikes, if there's a potential investment in that that could diminish the need for vehicles. You know, if we're moving one staff member less than three miles away, if that's a use case that we have a vehicle for, that we're purchasing something for, I'd love to, you know, start being the change we want to see in the world. I'm going down my list. I think that's it. I had a few more questions written down for earlier, but I think that's my list of points. Let me look down here. Oh, we, no, never mind. Y'all have heard me make enough jokes. Perfect. I think I'm good.
All right. Well, was that, okay. Thank you all for your questions, and there are a lot of thematic arcs through this, so I think we'll be able to group this together and think about how we bring it forward and how we spend our November together. So appreciate the insight. I just want to note, too, again, there's always going to be additional questions, and I think as we come forward, especially as there's back and forth, as we look at some of those thematic areas, but if there are anything that you hear about or certainly want the public to know, that as we have a public hearing, if something new comes up, it's not like the opportunity to have additional conversations is now closed. So just please rest assured with that, and staff will be looking. We have next week with no council meeting, so it gives us a little time to sort and prepare. So looking forward to coming back on November 1st.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you both. Really appreciate your work and everybody's that went into this. All right, next up is council conversations.
I got a juicy one tonight.
Ooh!
I would like to see if we, as a council, will support youth, some form of a youth pop shop. If we have the ability to do that, I'd like to see if we can have a discussion on that in the future. I know we're open application right now, but it would be an amazing opportunity for some youth artists to maybe have an opportunity to have a little structure down there and do their own little incubator program themselves. So I think it's a cool opportunity. I've met a couple of high school students. I mentioned the high school student that painted the mural in Kirkland. If we can create that little outlet for them, I think it might be a cool opportunity to use a pop shop for some youth.
There is a group that did a, at the, sorry, I'm, but the high school student, a bunch of high school students did something over the summer, and they do it every year, so I want to encourage entrepreneurship within the high school student community. So, yeah, so are you saying open, have another structure that's city-sponsored, just like we have today?
Yeah, I'd be, I think the pop, one of the pop shops down there might be a great opportunity for them to showcase their art. They could rotate different high schools within our area, different elementary schools, different middle schools, maybe have a committee of youth. Our youth committee could maybe work on that. So I think it's a great opportunity, it's something maybe we discuss. I think there might be some logistics with youth running some type of an organization, but I think more, we'd have to talk about that further to see what that would look like for logistics, but I think it'd be a great opportunity for the youth in the community.
I like it. It's pretty juicy.
I'd like to lend support to that idea as well. I think anytime we can get the youth involved, and if they're entrepreneurial and they think it's something they want to do, I think we should definitely support them, so I'd love for staff to look into that as well.
I like the idea a lot. I'm sitting there thinking, would FBLA teacher appreciate being volunteered for yet another obligation? But maybe an FBLA teacher in each of the high schools would like to, you know, could be that adult contact. But now, that's not art. You would have to, you know, think bigger than just prepackaged manufactured things, so.
Yeah, there's plenty of art teachers in our, in our community that I think would love to have that opportunity to work with the youth, so I'm sure we could find.
I was going to ask you, because I saw, I made notes, you know, for future reference, was the teen's name Austin Pisinich? Does that sound right? He does something called Save Our Salmon murals all over the place?
Yeah, yeah. If you haven't seen it, it's amazing, it's on the site of Spuds.
I think he did one in Linwood as well.
Yes, yes.
He would, I was, when I saw the report, it was, when I saw the report, I was like, what, what wall, what bridge could we get him to, you know, do some work? Because I think he does, he brings community members, he designs it, and then he has community members help paint it. I thought, that would be an easy win. Everybody would love that, and it's great, great artwork, too.
I've had a wall in mind that needs painting for quite a while, and that is, if you go outside this building and go down the sidewalk, and you look at the parking garage, there is an empty concrete wall that could be very pretty as a public mural. Just throwing it out there.
So would this idea be something that we would, as a council members, we would, you know, volunteer and do it, or is it something that we want, an official city-type thing? Because it depends on how short-term or long-term, or when do we want to get started on this thing?
Referring to the pop?
Yeah.
Oh, I think that's something that we'd need to look in legisically, legally, to see if youth can actually run something, who would manage it? So, I mean, I can, if we're supportive, I can reach out to maybe somebody at the city and find out, Jeannie Ash, yes, see what, what would entail to move things forward, and then come back with some information for you guys to think about. And yeah, I think just having the conversation and opening the opportunity, and to your point, yes, I believe it's an amazing opportunity for council members to participate with the youth. And you don't have to have a coach's voice to do it either.
I'm in, I'm in.
But it helps.
I'll just put a shout out, since it was featured not too long ago, that the community pantry at Bothell High is open and accepting donations. That was featured on, oh, one of the Bothell High Facebook page, and it's, I walked by the other day, it's actually very nice. It's a portable, it looks like a little shed outside the administration building, but I just really love to see when community members come together to serve those who may be down on hard times or who are struggling in some way, and it also provides our youth and adults in the community opportunities to give back and to recognize that we are not always as privileged in all time periods of our lives, to remember times maybe when we struggled and we're doing better, to recognize that there's an opportunity to be the people who we needed when, when we needed them for others, now that things are different. And so really glad to see that that project is taking off, and yeah, would encourage
Let's call it a night. Thank you all. Thank you.
Recording stopped.